I guess we'll start with Councilwoman. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'd like to do a clarification on a resolution that we passed earlier. Mr. Dillon informed us that he was the motion maker on this resolution and that he wanted the resolution to read as follows. Whereas on the bottom of page one would read, whereas the Oglala Sioux tribe believes that the receipt of all bids, farm pasture leases, range units, and allocated land issue should be extended forty-five days from the date the Bureau of Indian Affairs receives resolution. And that would be the resolution number. Twenty-two, what? Page sixty-three. And on the second page, the therefore be it resolved would read, therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, based upon the recommendations of Oglala Sioux Tribe Land and Natural Resource Committee, does hereby direct the Pining Agency of the Bureau of Indian Affairs to extend the deadline for receipt of all bids, farm pasture leases, range units, and allocated land issues forty-five days from the date the Bureau of Indian Affairs receives the resolution number twenty-two dash sixty-three. So moved to make that amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so motions are made, seconded by Councilman Youngman and Councilman Hawkins. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, Secretary, we call a vote on that clarifying motion.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
No.
Council passes fifteen yes, one no. Thank you, Council. Councilman Carl, did you have another motion?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman or Chairwoman, why did, or Chairwoman Whitehorse, what?
I know, long day. I have a resolution I would like to present. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to establish tribal. Wrong one. This one. Resolution of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to rescind Tribal Council Resolution twenty-two dash thirteen. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four and under article three of the Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W of the Constitution authorize the Tribal Council to manage all economic affairs of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, to protect and preserve the property of the tribe, to adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the tribe and its membership. And whereas Golden West Telecommunications Cooperative Incorporated, DBA, Golden West Telecommunications, or Golden West, is a cooperative corporation formed and existing under the laws of the state of South Dakota with its principal executive office in Wall, South Dakota, and an area office in Pine Ridge, South Dakota, under reservation. And whereas Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-eight, he ordered Golden West prior to returning to work on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation to furnish the Oglala Sioux Tribe Spectrum Project among other all easements, rights of way, and service line agreements on the Pine Ridge Reservation, while the other resolutions, or some of them, allowed Golden West to perform specifically limited work on the reservation, provided that Golden West complies with tribal law and obtains all required licenses, rights of way, and easements prior to commencement of work. And whereas the tribe is working diligently via the Oglala Sioux Tribe Spectrum Project and.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, that's not the right version.
Where is the right version?
It should be, it was emailed shortly after the break, during the break.
Okay, I have the other stuff out of it. Okay.
Yes. You have that one? It should say point six on the title.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so I'm going to start at the one, two, three, fourth. Whereas, no. Whereas the Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-eight XB ordered Golden West prior to performing work on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation to furnish the Oglala Sioux Tribe Spectrum Project, among other things, all easements, rights of way, and service in, service line agreements to the Pine Ridge Reservation. And whereas the tribe is working diligently via the Oglala Sioux Tribe Spectrum Project and otherwise to provide broadband infrastructure and service on its Pine Ridge Indian Reservation for myriad reasons, including governance, telehealth, emergency response, education, and business purposes. And whereas having made the determination that available grant opportunities would benefit the tribe in its efforts to build out the needed broadband infrastructure on the tribe's Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, particularly for the houses and areas of the Pine Ridge Reservation, which are unserved, the tribe proactively applied for a National Telecommunications and Information Administration Tribal Connectivity Broadband Program Grant and the United, and a United States Department of Agriculture Reconnect Program Grant per Resolution twenty-one dash one-six-one and Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three. And whereas, per Resolution twenty-two dash. The tribe has been in communication with Golden West for potential agreement whereby the tribe would purchase certain services from Golden West at a discounted rate to assist the Oglala Sioux Tribe Spectrum Project deployment of a broadband network on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has determined that it needs to obtain additional information and revisit how the discussed potential arrangement with Golden West would affect the Oglala Sioux Tribe Spectrum Project. And whereas new information has come to light in that Golden West previously represented to the tribe that it was not receiving federal funds for its work on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, but that the Funding Agency for the Tribe's grant recently sent information that Golden West is receiving federal funding, and the tribe needs time to assess the details and impacts of this new information. And whereas the tribe has asked Golden West to document its authority for its work on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation by providing its easements, rights of ways, and service line agreements on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation per Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-eight XB and otherwise, and Golden West has not been able to fully comply with the tribe's request. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe in its efforts to further the Oglala Sioux Tribe Spectrum Project to ensure affordable broadband services for its citizens and others on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation to pause discussion with Golden West until such time as the tribe can definitely assess the impacts of the same and new information received on its overall broadband efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby rescinds Resolution number twenty-two. Twenty-two. Dash thirteen, so that it can reassess its overall broadband planning. And be it further resolved that the stop work orders. I thought we took that part out.
No, that part's fine.
That part's fine?
Yes.
Be it further resolved that the stop work orders in the following resolutions shall remain in effect. Res, no, we did take that out, Steve.
You took out the second half.
In the following resolutions shall remain in effect. Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-eight. May sixth, two thousand twenty-one, Resolution number twenty-one dash one-eighty-six. August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-three, September thirty, twenty twenty-one. And be it further resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribe directs the Bureau of Indian Affairs not to reissue any new rights of ways or easements to Golden West in, on, over, or under any land in which the Oglala Sioux Tribe has an interest without first obtaining the prior informed written consent of the Oglala Sioux Tribe as evidenced by a Tribal Council Resolution enacted on or after the date of this resolution. And be it further resolved that there is no legally binding agreement between the tribe and Golden West that authorizes Golden West to build out its fiber-to-the-home project on the Pine Ridge Reservation. And nothing in this resolution or any other resolution enacted by the Tribal Council shall operate or be construed to operate as such authority. Steve, I think we did take that be it further resolved out because that was our discussion. Right?
You, there was language about. There was language that was taken out. But.
Was that be it further resolved?
It was the second half of that be it further resolved.
No, because the thing that's in there is the one that's on the previous resolution that we had discussed.
I agree. I think we took that out.
Um. Mr. Chair, I think, I think we were taking out this, I thought we were taking out the second half. But this particular clause is talking about the stop work orders to remain in effect. Um.
But, but it does not affect the carve-out. Which is what we took out. There were carve-outs and that was taken out.
Okay. All right, motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Hawkins. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, hearing no more, no more, no more. So, um. We already called, we already called for it. Can't ask anything. Okay, hearing no further discussion. Secretary, call vote please. Thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Council passes seventeen unanimous. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Chairman, Chairman.
Can, can we do our final finance agenda item?
Yeah, that's what.
Go ahead, Tyler. I know you wanted to read it.
Voluntold.
Is that the, is that the book that was passed down?
That's that fifty-page book.
This is the booklet. So if y'all look at your booklet here. Get some water. You can stretch your legs while I'm reading because I'll probably get to the therefore be it resolved in about ten minutes. Ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, amending ordinance number twenty-one dash seventy-three concerning the Oglala Sioux Tribe COVID-19 Vaccination Incentive Program. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe recognized under section sixteen of the nineteen thirty-four Indian Reorganization Act, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three, and under article three of the Tribal Constitution, the Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas under, whereas article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W of the Tribal Constitution empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the Tribal Council enacted ordinance number twenty-one dash forty-three, which establishes the Oglala Sioux Tribe COVID-19 Vaccination Incentive Program. And whereas on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, the Tribal Council enacted ordinance number twenty-one dash sixty-five to amend ordinance number twenty-one dash forty-three. And whereas on October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, the Tribal Council enacted ordinance number twenty-one dash seventy-three to amend and replace ordinance number twenty-one dash four, twenty-one dash forty-three, and to rescind ordinance number twenty-one dash sixty-five. And whereas, whereas on November fourth, two thousand twenty-one, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the Tribal Council enacted ordinance number twenty-one dash seventy-seven, ordinance number twenty-one dash eighty-one, and ordinance number dash twenty-two dash eighteen, respectively to amend ordinance number twenty-one dash seventy-three. And whereas the Tribal Council enacted, enacts this ordinance to further amend the Oglala Sioux Tribe COVID-19 Vaccination Incentive Program to eliminate the residency requirement and to open, to open eligibility to all enrolled members of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, regardless of where they reside. And whereas the Tribal Council finds and declares that the vaccination incentive established by ordinance number twenty-one seventy-three, as previously amended, and as further amended, this ordinance is reasonable, expected to increase the number of people who choose to get vaccinated or to motivate people to get vaccinated sooner than they otherwise would have. And that the costs of the program are reasonably proportional to the expected public health benefits to the tribe and its members. Now therefore be ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby section one of the Oglala Sioux Tribe COVID-19 Vaccination Incentive Program, ordinance number twenty-one dash seventy-three, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, as amended to add subsections F and G, which shall read in their entirety as follows with additions underlined and in bold. F, the Oglala Sioux Tribe has, has a responsibility to protect and promote the health and well-being of all of its members regardless of where they reside. G, tribal members who reside off reservation frequently travel to the reservation to work, attend school, visit family members, and participate in cultural, religious, and spiritual events. And it is therefore vital that the tribe do everything in its power to increase the number of tribal members who choose to get vaccinated and to motivate tribal members to get vaccinated sooner than they otherwise would have. Be it further ordained that the Tribal Council hereby amend section three subsections B of ordinance number twenty-one seventy-three as amended and to read as in, as in its entirety as follows with deletions and strike-through and additions in underline and bold. B, reserved. Be it further ordained that the Tribal Council hereby amend section three subsection D of ordinance number twenty-one seventy-three as amended to read in its entirety as follows with deletions and strike-through and additions in underline and bold. D, you have been freely vaccinated against COVID-19 and proof of vaccination shall consist of both the following. One, a valid official COVID-19 vaccination record card issued by the CDC or IHS. And two, a vaccination or immunization record from a hospital, health clinics, or other vaccination provider that has administered the vaccine dosages, dosages separated apart by the COVID-19 vaccination record card, and both forms of proof shall be required for both forms of proof shall be, shall show the type of vaccination, vaccination administered, for example, a single-dose vaccination such as the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, or a two-dose vaccination such as the Pfizer or Moderna vaccines, and a date or dates of administrative dose of the vaccine and the fact that all of the necessary doses of vaccine have been administered. One dose of a single-dose vaccine or a two-dose of a two-dose vaccine. And be it further ordained that the Tribal Council hereby amend section four, subsection A of the ordinance number twenty-one seventy-three as amended to read in its entirety as follows with deletions and strike-through and additions in, underlining in bold. A, to apply for the tribe's COVID-19 vaccination incentive payment, tribal member who resides on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation must submit a single application form to be provided by the tribe, together with the proof of enrollment, proof of residence, and proof of vaccination to the district service center in a tribal district where the applicant lives. And the tribal member who resides off the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation must submit a single application form through a online portal to be administered by the tribe, together with the proof of enrollment and proof of vaccination to the tribal treasurer. Be it further ordained that the Tribal Council hereby amend subsection four, subsections E and F under ordinance number twenty-one dash seventy-three as amended to read in its entirety as follows with deletions and strike-through and additions and under. E, the district service centers will provide each reservation resident tribal member who submits an application with a written confirmation of receipt of which, of each application submitted to the district service centers, and the tribal treasurer shall provide each off-reservation tribal member with a written confirmation of receipt of each application submitted to the tribal treasurer. F, the district service center, excuse me, district service centers will submit all applications they have to, to the tribal treasurer for review, approval, or denial, and payment. Be it further ordained that the Tribal Council hereby amend section four subsection H of ordinance number twenty-one seventy-three as amended to read in its entirety as follows with deletions and strike-through and additions in underline and bold. H, payment process.
You ready now?
Nope. One. The payment process for approved applications that were originally submitted by reservation resident tribal members to the district service center shall be as A. On or before November eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, the tre, the treasurer shall prepare a spreadsheet for each tribal district containing a list of names and addresses of all applicants who reside within the tribal district and whose applications were approved as of November eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The treasurer shall prepare a payment voucher and make payment to the tribal district by check or money order made payable in the name of the tribal district in the amount equal to the amount of COVID-19 vaccine incentive payments for all applicants who reside within the tribal district and whose applicants, applications were approved of as of November eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The treasurer shall transmit the check or money order to the tribal district together with a copy of a spreadsheet containing the names and addresses of all newly approved applicants. B, beginning November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the, and continuing once every week thereafter, the treasurer shall prepare a new spreadsheet for each tribal district containing a list of names and addresses of all applicants who reside within the tribal district and whose applications were approved since the time of the last payment of the tribal district under this ordinance. The treasurer shall take appropriate measures to ensure that no applicant's name ever appears on more than one spreadsheet, and no applicant ever receives more than one payment under this payment process. Subject to subsection M of this section, the treasurer shall prepare a payment voucher and make payment to the tribal district by check or money order made payable to the name of the tribal district in the amount equal of the amount of the COVID-19 vaccine incentive payments for all applicants who reside within the tribal district and whose applicants were approved since the time of the last payment to the tribal district under this ordinance. The treasurer shall transmit a check or money order to the tribal district together with a copy of a new spreadsheet containing names and addresses of all newly approved applications. C, the tribal district shall be responsible for making payments of the COVID-19 vaccine incentive payments directly to the approved applicants, and the tribal district shall make such payments to approved applicants within one week after tribal district receives the funds and spreadsheet from the treasurer. D, the dis, the tribal district shall develop and maintain a log of all payments made to approved applicants and shall require each approved applicant personally to sign the payment log prior to receipt of payment. The tribal district shall maintain copies of all payments made to approved applicants, for example, copies of checks, money orders, et cetera. And the tribal district shall provide copies of all such payments and a copy of signed payment log to the treasurer and the tribal comptroller in, on a weekly basis. The treasurer and tribal comptroller shall each have the authority to audit the financial records of the tribal district on demand to ensure that all payments are made by the tribal district in a timely manner in compliance with this ordinance. Two, the payment process of approved applications that were originally submitted by off-reservation tribal members to the tribal treasurer shall be as follows. Within fifteen calendar days after the treasurer approves an application, the treasurer shall prepare a payment voucher and make payment, make a payment to the applicant by check or money order made payable to the applicant's name, and the tribal treasurer may elect to prepare payment vouchers for approval for approved applications on a weekly basis. Be it further ordained that this is, this remainder of the ordinance number twenty-one seventy-three as amended by ordinance number twenty-one dash seventy-seven, ordinance number twenty-one dash eighty-one, and ordinance number twenty-two dash eighteen shall remain in full force and in effect. And be it further ordained that the Tribal Council hereby authorizes the tribal treasurer to hire up to four full-time staff members for as long as it is necessary to process applications submitted by off-reservation tribal members and to otherwise administer this program. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. Motion.
Motion made by the Vice Chair, seconded by Chairwoman and Councilman Hawkins. There's a race.
I've got a question.
So I got two questions. Okay, so I got Councilman Youngman and then Councilman, a question.
Just for clarification from the online portal, are they still going to have to mail in their vaccinations?
So I believe on that online portal, there's a section in there where you can upload, take a picture and upload your document or scan it, and then it'll come with their, with their online application form.
All right. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my question is, the amount of the incentive that the on reservation received, is it going to be the same amount for the off reservation?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to know that because I know we're going to get calls on it. Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yeah, could we change that may to will on the weekly? Because when we say may, they'll do it for a while and then it'll be something else to come up or something will happen and then whatever, and then it won't be weekly. So if we change that may.
Should it be a shall instead of a made to shall? Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, or will, something that says they're going to do it weekly because we're going to have calls and calls and calls. Especially if it's been over a week or two weeks and where's my check and all that stuff we've talked about already. So if we make it mandatory for him to make sure that he's got something out every week, that's what's headed for us. All that stuff we've gone through already, so if we make it mandatory for him to make sure that he's got something out every week, that's what's headed for us.
Okay, so it should be shall, okay, okay.
Possible.
Yeah, just real, another reminder, I think that the other part we're kind of dealing with is the, uh. When somebody sends it in and we don't, they don't know if it was re- if it's gonna be processed or received when they use the portal. So I think that section in there about the treasurer will send them something saying they received it. That part really needs to be, um, that needs to be done because a lot of our tribal members don't hear nothing back. So that's something I think we need to make sure of.
Okay, thank you, no, it's good, good, uh, learning from the last time, so. Additional questions? Hearing or seeing.
One more.
Okay, so I got Councilman Youngman and Councilman Steele.
So this online portal will be up and running immediately or tomorrow or midnight?
Okay.
We will try to get it up here by the end of, I wanted to go live on Monday. Uh, would that be May second? Well, I'll have my staff in place and, uh, get the online portal ready and just go live on Monday if I could.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Um, uh, Councilman, oh, go ahead, uh, Councilman Yellowboy and then I'll come back to you, Councilman Steele.
Yep, I apologize, Mason, is that something that on the on their, when they submit their, um. Application is it something automatic that can go back to them and say that it was submitted?
Uh, I think there was just like on the online one for the ARPA one. If not, I could see if the the guys can do a receipt sent out by email because they actually have to do upload their, uh. Their vaccination cards, so maybe I could just add that.
That'd be good, thanks, Mace.
Um, Councilman Steele.
Thank you, so I think, um, that people need to understand that they're required, right? To have two documents, one, um, a medical record and a vaccination. If, is that what this ordinance says, Tyler?
Yeah, that's what, uh, so you need to, in that section there, you need to submit your. Your vaccination card as well as a, uh, document from. A respective wherever you got your vaccination administered, so whatever.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure that that's clear to people that it ain't just the vaccination card. And the reason being is we don't want to have, um, you know, those forged, um, vaccination cards. And another thing, another question I have is, um. You know, what if someone don't have a home district? A lot of people. Were born off the reservation, reservation, never resided here, never came here. Um, how do we, how do we deal with that and are the districts responsible for mailing out the? Checks to off reservation people or do they gotta come get them or?
How's that one? My office is gonna do all the off reservation, none of the districts are, can do any of the. Off reservation, that's what it said, that's why we made that change in the payments in that resolution.
Okay, that's what I wanna clarify because when you're, when they're reading the document, it talks about the service center staff, what they're, they will and will not do.
Sorry, that's just still for the the regular one, they'll still, we'll still do the regular on reservation, uh. And so I guess that needed to still be in there. So that's, they still have a role in doing the on reservation stuff, my office will be responsible for sending the checks out, doing the portal.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to clarify because there's, there's this confusion there and another thing is people need to understand is that. You know, whenever, uh, the treasurer's office, they only were supposed to send those checks out on Friday, Fridays. Um, Thursday and and then they'll be out to the districts on Fridays, but everyone is expecting a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. You know, and once he sends one check out, according to the ordinance, it says one check per week. So, you know, our our districts need to understand that it it's only one check per week, not every day or every other day. Thank you, Chair.
I have a question, Chairman.
Okay, so you got, uh, Councilwoman Cardo and Councilwoman Little Hawk Question, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Chair, I just received a text message from an individual saying that they received their. Vaccinations from Susan while it was open and since there's no Susan, how do they get a document from there?
Uh, would it be, uh, Councilman, would it be Oyate, OHC or or, uh, or Sue the, Susan, the IHS one?
It was, and the IHS one.
But.
Switched over, Chair. All the docs over from IHS to Oyate up there.
Okay, just need that, just need that clarification, thank you.
Yep, and Councilwoman, the, all the vaccinations should be registered to the state of South Dakota. So that number should be somewhere in the state of South Dakota system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Little Hawk Question.
But it didn't really just say South Dakota. Because we have tribal members living in other areas like Nebraska and. You know, Colorado and different areas that took their vaccination, so we need to make sure that clear. The other thing is, you know, we're gonna give, uh, Mason another four positions, so I'm sure, Mason. Out of your office, you're gonna make sure that, uh, when you're doing these checks weekly. And if they're done on Fridays, then I'm I'm sure that's gonna all run smoothly, right?
We will try to make sure, uh, it runs smoothly, we kind of learned from the ARPA. Portal and all the other stuff and how to change things so we we can, uh, make it a little faster, uh. System, so that's it, internally, we we ran through a few exercises to see if it works and seems to be working, so.
Okay, that's just, I I just wanted to ask that because like you said, you learned from the way it was, we ran things the other way. And now things are gonna probably run a lot better.
All right, thank you, uh, any more questions online, any more questions, okay. Uh, Mesa, I just have one question, uh, is so is this gonna, is it gonna be a written application or is it gonna be all online?
Uh, there, we're gonna have two, two, uh, well, we can print that online. Application if they, if there's a way that, you know, they wanna, uh, uh, print it offline. You know, from the website and submit it that way either by fax or even scan it, send it over to my email. I think that's the one we we set up for it. Or you can just do it on the online portal, but either way, you know, we're gonna have to have the two forms of, uh. Identification for the vaccination and proof of the shot was taken by the individual, but. Uh, we have the option of doing both, they can do the application online or they could do the paper one. Um, we will get the some paper applications. Uh, here, but the thing is, you know, if they're gonna be mostly off reservation, let's say someone from California wants to, uh. Um, apply for it, you know, it'd be a lot easier if they did it on, you know, online. Um, it'll take a little while for us to get the application sent to the individual and then for them to get the information, send it back, so. Um, but yeah, that's a possibility, they have ability to do either one.
Okay, thank you, and and just to clarify, uh, making sure that. Don't send any of the online, I mean, sorry, written applications to the cap offices, send them directly to your office, is that correct, Mason?
Yep, that'll be, uh, number one priority on there, it'll tell you where exactly where to send them.
Okay, good deal.
So with the cap office real quick and even though they're not a big part of the the off reservation stuff, we'll just remind them that if they do get an application by accident. Send it to my office and we'll work and do it from our office, so.
Okay, thank you, anything else? Okay. On Monday, okay, and this will start on Monday, May second, so just to clarify, we'll post, post that as well. Um, is there any, okay, so hearing nothing else, oh, go ahead, Secretary.
Representative Rodriguez, uh, you made a, uh, statement about a making amendment, can. You, um, repeat that so I make sure I have it correct? You wanted to change your word May to.
Shall. Yeah.
And that wasn't that number two, right?
Yeah, for the weekly payment or the check sent out weekly on the online portal.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
Okay, um, hearing nothing else. Um, Secretary, we call it up, please.
Clay Little Thunder. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh, Council passes sixteen yes, one out voting, thank you, Council, um, Chairman, uh, do you have anything else?
The, the last thing that finance has is your, um, aid to tribal government. Resolution, did you want us to read that or?
Yeah, I I think you read it and then, yeah, so.
I'll read it. Need brighter light, our younger eyes, Josh. And if you could email us, that would be great too.
I hope the district centers are listening so that you'll be receiving this ordinance. Either from the secretary's office by Friday.
Yes, we can make sure we get it out to them by Friday. And then I'll also email all of you. Um, okay.
Resolution of the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallalasoo Tribe to establish tribal allocation. Aid allocations for the aid to tribal government funds allocated to the Ogallalasoo Tribe under the American Rescue Plan Act. Whereas the Ogallalasoo Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen. Of the Indian Organization Act of nineteen thirty-four and under article three of the constitution, the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallalasoo Tribe. And whereas article four sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe. Protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallalasoo Tribe and its membership. And whereas the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one provides nine hundred million. Dollars in funding nationally to Bureau of Indian Affairs. To assist Indian tribes as they address the ongoing COVID pandemic and its damaging health and economic impacts in Indian country. And whereas the BIA has informed the tribe that the Bureau's ARP funding specifically allows for. Four million, four hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars for aid to tribal government for the Ogallalasoo Tribe. And whereas Office of the Assistant Secretary Indian Affairs in the Department of Interior. Has issued guidance concerning allowable uses of ATG funding. Provided through the Bureau of Indian Affairs under the ARP Act. See BIA frequently ask questions for Indian affairs. American Rescue Plan Act funding appropriated directly to Indian affairs. And whereas the BIA FAQs state. That the Indian tri- that Indian tribes may move this funding to any related expense. The tribal government deems necessary for recovery purposes. Which is interpreted to be any activity administered by the tribal government that is not specifically called out in the legislation. In other words, funds can be used for agriculture, economic development, roads, deman- road maintenance. Roads maintenance, KOM. If these areas are. If these are the areas needed for recovery. It is recommended that tribes keep clear documentation of what the funds are used for. And how it relates to recovery effort efforts for audit purposes. Further, any new activity must be included in the scope of work under the tribe's six thirty-eight contract prior to expenditure. FAQ number six. And whereas the Regional Director of the Great Plains Regional Office of BIA has informed the tribe that for each of the requested programs. The tribe will need to submit a tribal resolution, a scope of work, a budget, and a narrative for each program. The reporting requirements will also require a separate FFR four twenty-five. For the ARP funding on a quarterly basis, monitoring by an awarding official's technical representative. Will be subject to the annual audit requirement and possibly other ARP data requirements. The tribe should keep any funds received segregated, segregated. The point letter of May twenty twenty twenty-one. And whereas on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, the tribal council adopted a resolution number. Twenty-two dash zero five A to set aside five hundred thousand from the tribe's allocation of ATG funds. Under the ARP Act for the gravel mining project on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas a narrative, scope of work and budget for the gravel mining project is attached to this resolution as exhibit A. And whereas on April seventh, twenty twenty-one, by motion and vote, the Finance Committee of the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council recommended approval of additional expenditures. With corrections and justifications and those corrections and justifications are set forth in the budget attached to this resolution as exhibit B. And whereas the tribe understands that this is one-time funding and commits to segregation of funds as well as quarterly reporting requirements. For these funds. Now, therefore be it resolved that the tribal council of the Ogallalasoo Tribe supports the allocations set forth. In the attached budget for obligation of aid to tribal government funds under the American Rescue Plan Act. To facilitate the Great Plains region's distribution of such funds to the Ogallalasoo Tribe. And be it further resolved that the tribal president is authorized, directed, and delegated authority. To work with the legal department to develop a narrative, scope of work, and budget for proposed expenditures. And to seek approval from the BIA for the the proposed expenditures. And be it further resolved that the tribe will comply with all applicable procurement, reporting, and audit requirements and consistent with the BIA guidelines for the use of ATG funds. Under the ARP Act. The tribe will not expend ATG funds for the proposed expenditures until the use of such ATG funds. For the projects has been approved by the BIA. And the activity has been included in the scope of work under a self-determination PL ninety-three six thirty-eight contract. Between the BIA and the tribe. Certification, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by, uh, Vice Chair Yellowboy and Councilman Hawkins, any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair.
Um. Okay, uh, go ahead, Steve.
Um, in the budget, there's a typo which will be corrected. Um, it's exhibit B. And it's the line item for grant writers, it should be four hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight. And the total amount should be four million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight. The five and the eight were transposed. And then in the budget justification in exhibit B, there's the same type of graphical error that should be corrected and will be.
Okay, thank you, uh, additional questions?
Yes, I, I did.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to go over this whole thing. Um, but I wanted to find out is, are there any programs like CPS or? You know, because we're really having issues with funding for a child protection program and. Other programs out there as well that need support from the tribe, so did we identify anything? Or, you know, I just ran into the budget.
Okay, I I can kind of answer that, Councilwoman, so the way that, you know, I, because I did visit. Okay, I, I can kind of answer that, councilwoman. So, the way that, you know, I, because I did visit with Steve about that and um, so the part of the purpose of this, the overall funds from aid to tribal government is actual for economic recovery and COVID mitigation, anything like that. Um, anything outside of that is going to be hard to justify. And part of it is that, you know, with this anticipation of infrastructure funding coming in, um, you know, aid, you know, economic recovery funds that are part of the ARP Act. There was grants that were issued in recent annual grant writers. So initially when we were proposing this and when we visited with Danny Doherty from BIA, she said that was allowable to hire grant writers to go after some of those grants to kind of, you know, increase your funds. Because, you know, I'm looking at ways that how can you expand out, you know, not have four million, but how can you turn it into forty million or turn it into four hundred million or whatever? I mean, you want to use your money to, um, you know, try to leverage more resources for a community. Um, but unfortunately, that, that's, and I did ask Steve that, Steve, if you can help clarify that, but, um, that, that's, that was my understanding, so.
Yeah, I just found the, um, the budget of what, what you're asking. Um, so the aid to tribal government is, uh, got four million four hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. Is that the total amount that the, that you received?
Yeah, that, that's what, e- each, so basically what happened is that the BIA got, and it says, it spells it out in the resolution where I think the tribes total, all the tribes got nine hundred million. But that was Ogallala Sioux Tribe's share was at four million four hundred thirty-one two hundred and fifty-eight, actually, thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I did, uh, find the budget. Fire trucks were two, two point five million. And support, program support. What, what is that going to entail, the one million?
Um, we still got to meet with the programs, but the way that that was justified, or actually the way that it was explained to us is that we could submit them something and they, you know, it's kind of an ongoing thing, but they just need something in writing. Um, so, but we can amend that. But right now, we're, we're planning to meet with some of the programs and figure out how can we, you know, use some of these ones for recovery, whatever recovery might mean. Um, that, that's what we're trying to get down to. So we wanted to put more money into program support because that's the easiest way. And I know that a lot of programs under the, um, six thirty-eight line item are, there's like twenty-three of them. So we just need to go through with them and visit with them and all that, so. And we, we did try to do it last year. We did try to start this process, but I believe that nobody, uh, I think there was some program that showed up, but not everybody showed up, so.
So the, the gravel, the gravel mining project that you have on it for five hundred thousand, is that going to go to our, our, um, program here? Our, um, tribal program, or is that going to the other project?
I think it's to each haga, that, that's where.
Okay. And then the grant writers is four hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-five, correct, right?
And that's what that, yeah, and that's for the, um, that's for that. Yeah, four hundred and thirty-one, two fifty-eight, that, that's for the.
And this would, and this would still have to be approved by BIA.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, no. And this is the reason why we're submitting this budget as it is because, um, you know, we want to show it to them first and then if they come back and say no, then, you know, then it's going to be a no, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Hearing none, um, secretary, will you call the vote, please? Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Question, what's a motion?
The motion is to approve the resolution to establish tribal allocations for the aid to tribal government funds allocated to the Ogallala Sioux Tribe under the American Rescue Plan Act. It's a resolution.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross. James Cross. Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Not voting.
Jackie Sears.
He, uh.
Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
No.
Craig Dillon. Craig Dillon.
Uh, council, that motion passes twelve yes, two no, and three not voting. Thank you, council. Thank you, chairman, appreciate it. Uh, vice chair, thank you. Uh, is there anything else that we have? Okay. Yeah, we, we have done that last, but we had fourteen, so, and three, three not voting. Okay.
Chair, I need to be excused.
Okay, um, okay, uh, there's, uh, excused, okay. Uh, hold on, councilwoman. Uh, so there's a motion to approve the vice chair's report. Is there a second? Seconded by councilwoman, uh, Little Hawk Weston and Councilman Youngman. Any discussion? Hearing, councilman, what, do you have a question or, oh, okay, second, okay, okay. Uh, any questions? Hearing none, secretary, we call the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes, yes.
Craig Dillon. Craig Dillon.
Uh, council that passes sixteen yes, one not voting. Thank you. And I think councilman, uh, Carlo needs to be excused, so she'll, she'll be excused. So, thank you. Thank you, councilman. Uh, councilman?
Motion to approve secretary, the tribal council minutes for March eighth, thirteenth, twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by councilman Hawkins, the secretary's minutes, and the dates mentioned in the council. Any discussion? Hearing none, secretary, we call the vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo, excuse me. Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Craig Dillon.
Uh, council that passes fifteen yes, one not voting. Thank you, council.
Chair.
Uh, councilman?
Motion to approve executive committee minutes from March eighteenth and twenty-fourth.
Okay, motion to approve.
Um, also for clarification or question to the secretary, are these two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two minutes?
They're two thousand twenty-two.
Kind of figured that, but.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion to approve secretary's, uh, minutes, executive committee minutes, March twenty, March eighteenth, March twenty-fourth. Uh, seconded by councilman Hawkins. Any discussion? Hearing none, secretary, we call the vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo. Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Craig Dillon.
Council that passes fifteen yes, one not voting. Thank you, uh, secretary. Uh, moving on, uh, item nineteen, treasurer's office. Um. Okay, there is, uh, there's councilman. Uh, I said, okay, so, uh, treasurer, big croat, do you want to give your report?
Okay, so I did send off the report earlier, uh, and it was kind of a bigger report. One of the, uh, reports that we, that I, uh, sent actually was the, uh, the ARPA one. Um, I know some of you guys, somebody, somebody can have requ- or questions on that one. Um, and Cora, I did send you, uh, one I wanted to look at before I sent it out. Um, that's actually the, uh, the, it's basically the balance sheet for the COVID, uh, monies to kind of show exactly where, where, where we are at with, uh, uh, the ARPA, I'm sorry, not the COVID, COVID and ARP are different. If you look at the budget I sent you uh, in the report, I gave you the COVID off, the COVID, and then the other one's the ARPA. If you understood that right. Um, and is there any questions on, on what you got to see?
Uh, councilman and Little Hawk Weston.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a question, Mason. I did have a chance to go through the, uh, reports that you emailed us.
Yes.
And, um, I think under, I think the budget that you had for Wakabami District. I think it's the one for, um, it might be for ARPA.
So that, no, no, that's the COVID, that's still, yeah, COVID nineteen, if you look. The COVID nineteen budget goes through and that's, uh, that's actually a, uh, let's see, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen-page document, fifteen-page document, and then it shows you the balance at the end. Um, there's going to be.
From, I guess my question was, it ran from last year? Last year to the end of, I think it was to the end of December?
Yep, till the end of December thirty-first.
Yeah. On what the balance was left.
So that's on page nine, Wakabami Districts. And so one of the things we didn't do yet, and that's what I'm, we're working on now. Um, so what I did on the, the ARPA one, if you look at the last, um, last three pages here, this is the, the trial balance for, uh, the ARPA, which is a different fund number, that zero zero nine is the American relief. Um, we did not break it down. Um, so there's more to this report here that I have to break it down more. Uh, but I wanted to get you guys the, you know, kind of give you a, a glimpse of what we, we've spent so far. Um, some of them, you'll see actual, uh, uh, there's some mistakes in the postings. If you look, there's, uh, uh, let's start with the, uh, burial program, uh, so starts with sixty-seven hundred, that was the line item. And you see some of the mistakes there that we, we, uh, did. If you see that, there's, uh, some postings for uh, sixty-seven zero wakes and funerals, uh, sixty-seven fifteen, which is a person, uh, sixty-seven sixteen to category something. Uh, and sixty-seven eighteen, which is, uh, you know, so those are some mistakes in the postings. Uh, we're going to have to get those, uh, fixed. And then if you go down, you know, the, the two thousand stimulus, for some reason, uh, we posted that one. Then if you go down, we posted again in another, you know, a different line item, the eighty-seven fifteen, which it should be just altogether. Um, again, if you look at the, uh, seventy-four ten, the, uh, one thousand COVID vaccinations, and we got the other line item there later on in the document, I don't remember exactly where it was. Was that in the second one? Um, you know, just little things like that, we just got to clean it up and, and fix. So, but once I do, uh, you'll, it'll have a better report for the ARP monies.
You, councilwoman, you settled for it.
The budget I was, uh, looking at or the, uh, report I looked at last night, uh, was the, uh, trial balance for Wakabami District. I think it was eight oh seven, the code.
Eight oh seven Wakabami.
Yeah, Wakabami District, it had eight seven two COVID nineteen.
Yep.
Um, March first, twenty twenty, through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. But it just gave the break, breakdown of salaries, the fringe benefits, contracted services, equipment, housing repair program, supplies, utilities, work experience, and capital outlay, uh, expense. I guess, uh, my question was, um, was this the original budget that was submitted by the, um, the district? That you have on this trial balance sheet?
Yes, uh, but you got to remember, if, you know, we had to combine some codes, if the district sent in like utilities and, and something else, it probably, all we did was probably combined, you know, those two codes, whatever it is, supplies, uh, you know, there's probably something inside there where we, you know. It's not going to be, there's no line item matching exactly probably what was put in for each one of the districts. That's why we uh, used the line item for contracted services, maybe at the district level, it was broken down by, you know, um, housing repair and whatnot stuff. So that's the reason why we just added to one line item for, you know, for wherever the contractors were.
Also, the question, or the question I'm trying to get at, Mason, is if our districts have, uh, this as a budget, which I'm thinking this is a budget from back then, then, um, when you gave us our balance to the COVID money, I think Wakabami was sitting at a hundred and sixty-something thousand balance left in the COVID money. So that would, that, this is to me, sound like the original budget, and then now we're down to that one sixty, I think it was at one sixty-one thousand?
Yeah, I don't know offhand, Sonia.
I guess that, that was why I'm asking you the, these questions, because that's kind of how I'm, uh, looking at it.
So you got to remember, there's not, not going to be any more, uh, postings to this budget at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think this is original budget, is what I'm trying to say, that was budgeted for that money. But then, uh, now we have a balance left of a hundred and sixty-something thousand. So that was just my, uh, question. Maybe you could look into it, huh?
You got to, and remember what we did is we closed out this, we moved that money over to the next, uh, the next, uh, ARPA monies, but I'm guessing if it's not in there, because you just see the trial balance, I probably have a budget for the districts.
Yeah, the district has a, each district is, uh, a little different, because they each got a different amount.
Not every district had an amount, though. You got to remember that.
Yeah, I know, but that's after they were spending, so, but I'm just looking at the, the trial balance sheet for our district. That's what the questions I had. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselwoman. As I got Counselwoman Whitehorse, Counselwoman Spotted Bear, and Counselwoman Sears.
I was just going to remind Sonia that, remember, we passed the ordinance a couple of months ago and that has the, the ending balance? That, yeah, the COVID was moved over to the ARPA. So that money should be available for your district. And yeah. Yeah, and I think our district was the only one who actually did that. Yeah, but I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's report.
Okay, motion to approve, signed by Councilman, I'm sorry, yeah, Councilman Young.
Before you write a motion?
No, no, we, we still, we're still in discussion, so.
Okay.
So I got, so I got Counselwoman White, or Counselwoman Spotted Bear, Counselwoman Sears, and Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Thank you, President. So Mason, every month I have to ask for the, the Treasurer's report, because I never get it. And I went through all of the secretary's emails. I go through both of my emails, the tribe and my personal, and I still don't get the Treasurer's report. And I've asked to see the ARPA expenditure report, and I'm not getting any of that.
So can I, Stacy, that, these are the emails that you, you gave Will to submit to me for sending those out? Because the only thing I have is just in one, one email that says all council@ogla.org and all executive board@ogla.org. And that's who I've been sending all these reports to. I don't have any other individual emails, I guess.
Cora just sent it to me now, so I'm going through it. Thank you.
We'll probably have to work with Will, sorry, and see what he has, because I don't re, I don't receive your reports either.
Okay.
Will.
Okay, thank you. Counselwoman Sears? Counselwoman?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought, I saw your hand up earlier, so, okay. Counselman Jumping Eagle?
So my question is, there's a lot of questions. Chairman, I don't know if this is for you or for Mason, but are, are we, are the programs able to get into that sams.gov now?
Yeah, I, I can kind of share a little bit about that. So, so I was approached about sams.gov, I think it was about two weeks ago. And I know that we signed some documents and they sent it back. They said it wasn't notarized properly, so we sent some more back. And then they said that wasn't notarized properly. And hopefully, that was, I signed some, what was it, yesterday? And, and hopefully that will help. But I know that Dean sent the email to sams.gov, I think the other day. So it, it should be good. So hopefully, I don't, I, I, I was just working with Tony on it, but that, that's where the last I knew it was. I don't know, Mason has a different update, but that.
Yeah, I could finish with this one. So we actually finally got the letter saying that, I'll, I'll, I'm the administrator of it again. Kevin's right, we had to go through the whole list of sending in documents that would, would Kevin had to sign, and we finally got the right documents. I'm back to being the original administrator. One of the things was, is that if you looked at the sams.gov, there's a, should be only one login, and there should be only one DUNES number. What was going on is that there was multiple DUNES numbers, multiple logins, multiple. I guess there was, there were six DUNES numbers that the tribe had. And it, it's not good when we have all these DUNES numbers that, we shouldn't have all those DUNES numbers. So we, what we needed to do is get rid of all the rest of those, and we finally got back to getting only one. When we got back to getting this one, there was programs that were going back in there, trying to sign up and get DUNES numbers for the tribe again. So there was, when we, when I finally got in there, looked, and then, and we had the, to look and see who, who was identifying, who was trying to get back in there and get DUNES numbers for the programs again. There was over sixteen initial requests that we had to pretty much take off and say, you know, that's not the, that's somebody else, that's not the tribe. So we got that fixed. And I might, it's, I don't, I don't, I said that wrong, it's not sixteen, it was six. So we, again, again, like I said, we got that in. We drew down what we could on the ASAP, what we had on ASAP, and we're working on the, all the Fed One stuff. And now we're working on the BIE drawdowns. So we're back to being normal business now.
Yeah, thank you, Mason.
Okay.
All right, Counselwoman Whitehorse?
So Mason, does that mean that program directors will have to go to your office or to, to, to upload their grants? Not drawdowns, but to upload the grant applications?
We have Tony Mallow now. I just set, set her profile to be able to submit the grants now. So yes, they would have to come back to us, and we will submit the grants again like we normally do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, additional questions? Hearing or seeing none, there's a motion on the floor to approve the report. Secretary called, uh,
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Uh huh.
Wayne Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Counsel that passes twelve yes, three no, and one not voting. Thank you, counsel. Moving on, the fifth member's office. Is there any, fifth member, are you here? Okay, he's here. Okay. He's coming. Do you want to present your report?
Due to time, I motioned to approve his report. I read it.
All right, motion to approve, motion, there's a motion to table, second. All right, table a motion, take precedence. Okay. Okay, so there's a, okay, all right, so there's a motion to approve, signed by Counselman Youngman. Counselwoman?
Could you give us an update on what's going on with the repatriation of the artifacts from the museum in Massachusetts?
Yeah, we had that meeting this weekend with the Wounded Knee survivors. Presented the pictures that we had. Henry Red Cloud and Manny Ironhawk from Eagle Butte gave a report. The, the people in the room gave a consensus to allow us to write the letter that first started this, this meeting. So I'll be working with President Killer to get that letter written and sent over to the Berry Museum. Initial reports when the, when the delegation was over there, Berry Museum agreed to have the, all the artifacts repatriated. Later in the last week or so, this Mia Fararello, who was out in that area, said that the museum is trying to backpedal now. So we're still, we're still looking into, you know, we're probably gonna have to get more, more stringent with them, start applying the NACPA laws. But initial report was they approved repatriation of all that stuff. And all that stuff was stolen from the, at the massacre of Wounded Knee, eighteen ninety. Same as the stuff that we was working on in Glasgow. And both in Glasgow, they also approved to repatriate that from Scotland. So we, I mean, we did. I think we did a good job in answering all the questions of all the Wounded Knee survivors descendents that were at the meeting this past weekend.
Thank you. Additional questions for our fifth member? Hearing none. Is there a, a secretary, we call the vote to approve report?
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Wayne Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Counsel that passes sixteen yes, unanimous. Thank you, fifth member. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel.
Item number twenty-one. Dr. Jumping Eagle? Okay.
Yes.
You're up.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Let me just share my screen here. I did email you out the, my report. But I'll just highlight a couple of, a few of the hot topics, which I know are all these questions. Okay. I just want to just a few updates. So we're continuing to meet our weekly financial goals. Everyone's been working hard to follow up with getting the visits coded and get the collections, so we can use those funds to provide as much services as we can to the community. We did see a little increase here in March for the clinic visits, so that's good for the service unit for the community. Just for the access to care for contract health, we're funding the medical priorities ones and twos, but also we occasionally have threes in there as well. And we have seen a little bit of improvement. We have talked with the area, and we've passed on to the headquarters that we had been seeing some of the delays in, although our contract health office has been doing their part to get the bills paid. There is another entity, which is called the interim. It's basically Blue Cross Blue Shield that helps pay out the purchase orders to the hospitals and other referral clinics. And they had some delays in their process, but they've been working on improving that. So hopefully those bills will be getting paid with a faster turnaround time. But please continue to reach out to us and let us know. There's the drop boxes at the front of each clinic. Or you can get those bills to us, to our purchase referred care team, so we can look into those and follow up on them. Also, on the, our service unit radio show, we are gonna have our contract health team, our purchase referred care team on there, and they'll be answering any questions and giving out some information for the community. And then just kind of follow up with, I know everyone always wants to know what our COVID vaccination is looking like. So to date, the COVID vaccination team for the Piner Service Unit has given a total of thirty-two thousand COVID vaccinations to the community, so that's great. We're continuing to do the weekly radio show and give out information to the community about COVID vaccinations, treatments, prevention. We've also added additional topics to talk about sexually transmitted infection, prevention and screening, behavioral health. And like I mentioned, we're gonna talk about contract health or PRC as well. And then when we talk about the percentage of those who are fully vaccinated, right now we're looking at fifty percent. And this information was sent out to our OST Public Health Administrator, Dolores Pueyer, as well. And then you have this information regarding our average inpatient emergency department visits, which have stayed pretty steady. And when we look at our ambulance department, we have an average of four ambulances that are on the days and night shifts. Our goal is to increase that to five. Right now, we have currently fifteen permanent ambulance staff with the Piner Service Unit ambulance team. We also are continuing to use a, a contract to supplement that staff. But we're continuing to recruit additional permanent paramedics, EMTs, drivers. And we have some selections in the HR process. We're can, reaching out to schools, and we're reaching out to get agreements in place where we could bring in students, so that we could use that as a way to recruit additional EMTs and paramedics as well. We've been increasing our number of interfacility transfers. Those are transfers that go from the hospital to other facilities, and that's increased in average to three per day. Some of our positions were changing to part-time, because we're hearing that some people want to work on a part-time basis. So we're, that's in the works, and we should hopefully get those advertised soon as well. One of the challenges for the ambulance department is that we are in the process of getting a radio agreement in place that will allow the ambulance team to be on the same radio system as the nine-one-one police dispatch system. So that agreement's in process with our IHS IT department. It's working through the agreement process. Once we get it through there, we bring it to OST and the police department to follow your process as well. We've also just recently had a joint commission lab two-year survey that was part of our regular survey process. And the lab did a great job. We did have some findings, and we're doing some corrective action plans around that. But the lab continues to have ongoing joint commission accreditation. And we're working with the rest of the hospital to continue to prepare for joint commission survey. The ambulance departments continuing to await a CMS survey as well. The other, you know, topic that I wanted to discuss, which is an ongoing challenge for the community, are the ongoing behavioral health issues, as we're all aware. We did just recently have a, a community meeting on April thirteenth. And we're going to re-initiate that meeting on a monthly basis. The next month, it'll be hosted by the OST Tribal Health Director, or Tribal Educator Director, Dana Brave Eagle. So she'll be sending out the invite to everybody, and it will be, continue to be a recurring monthly meeting. So she'll be sending out the invites to that. The first that we did here with the re-initiation was here at the hospital. And we just wanted to restart the conversations about how we can collaborate between IHS, OST programs and the schools. And look at, you know, what types of services we're offering at Al Petalito TP, and also we had Fabian Kennedy with Circles of Care was there. And so I, I think we had some really good discussions about how we can work together. We know that there's a ongoing high level of need in the community regarding behavioral health issues. And we're looking at how can we be Um, and we're looking at how can we be, um, even though we're continuing to have short staffing in our department. Right now, we have twelve permanent behavioral health positions that are filled and two COVID positions. Um, and we did get some extra help with headquarters and area, uh, HR to work on getting more of our positions advertised. So those are going through the process for, uh, behavioral health positions. But we're also looking at more, uh, telehealth services as well. Um, so I think I have that listed later on in the report. So looking at how we can expand, um, and then also looking at using our, uh, COVID ARPA funds and getting quotes on, um, more types of equipment that we could bring into the schools to offer more school-based services. Um, an additional challenge, and I've asked for assistance with this, um, from area and also from the schools, is that in order to bring school-based health centers into the schools, they pretty much need a separate agreement with each individual school. We do have an agreement in place between IHS and BIE, BIA. Um, but that doesn't cover very many schools, so that's a work in progress as well. And then when look at, I'm gonna scroll down here, uh, there are medical psychiatric, um, positions. We have a telepsychiatrist that's gonna start. This will be a full-time federal position. This is, um, from what I'm hearing, one of the, uh, few, uh, permanent federal telepsychiatrists uh, with IHS and has a start date of May eighth. Um, we're also have other, another part-time telepsychiatrist position that's gonna be advertised soon. And then we have a total of three psychiatric nurse practitioner positions to be advertised. One is advertised and we have a selection pending for that as well. We're also working on setting up some meetings. One is with the acting OST Attorney General. We'd like to have a discussion on how we can expedite the emergency mental health hold process. How, um, we could have a process that is also on nights, weekends, um, holidays, or when OST has admin leave, as this, um, right now, we don't have a process for that. And so sometimes that can lead to, uh, delays, uh, for our psychiatric patients who need a higher level of care. Who need to be transferred. Um, and we're also working on setting up a meeting with Child Protective Services. At times, we may have, um, pediatric patients who have high-risk psychiatric needs. Um, but we may not be able to locate a parent or a guardian. And so then we have to involve, um, Child Protective Services. So we'd like to have more discussions about that as well. And then just wanna remind that we're continuing to collaborate with, uh, the Department of Health and the CHRs and our public health nursing, um, to reach out to the community and the schools regarding sexually transmitted infection prevention. The teams have been doing some education with the schools and reaching out to remind people that we do have, um, sexually transmitted infection screening services available. Um, and, and that's, uh, definitely something we want people to be encouraged to, um, participate in preventive healthcare, to do their wellness screenings and checkups as well. You have any question?
Uh, thank you, um, thank you, Dr. Jumping Eagle. Are there questions for Dr. Jumping Eagle? Uh, Councilman Hawkins?
Uh, Dr. Jumping Eagle, so what's our, uh, what's our status? Are we still in the yellow going towards green or?
Um, that, I think that the information I send, the data that I have to, um, Dolores Pueyer. She's a public health administrator and then she sends that info to Ray and Redo. Um, and then they together update the, um, that status or the COVID risk zone. But yeah, my understanding would it is that it was, um, yeah. That it was still in the yellow zone right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions for, uh, Dr. Jumping Eagle?
I had one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see your hand up. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, the, um, oh, the other night, they had a shooting out in Madison. They waited an hour, over an hour for the lifeflight from Rapid when our ORR was still sitting at the airport. So I, I don't know when ours could have been there in fifteen minutes instead of hour and forty-five minute, uh, hour and over an hour with a gunshot victim. So, how does that work?
So regarding any specific cases, I, I can't talk about details as far as, um, patient health information, but in general, if there's a, a concern about any delay in care, then I'm, I'm collecting all information and then we review it with our risk management process, which involves a root cause analysis. So we look at, um, what occurred and we bring all the information together, the, the data, and then go from there.
Well, it was, it was, it was a GSW, so I mean, what kinda more threat analysis do you need? I mean, they called lifeflight, so it was kinda high on the, uh, you know, threshold there. So I don't see why if it's gonna take them an hour and forty-five to get to a location that our own ORR that sits outside, uh, the area here isn't utilized.
So I have to review all the information and then we would do the root cause analysis and then, and review all the information. And, and then, you know, at some point, we could discuss that further, but I can't talk about specific patient health information.
No, I didn't bring up the patient's health. I said he had a GSW. Everybody knows that. That's public information. I'm not asking his name, his birthday, his social security number, his current status. I'm not asking any of that. I'm asking why you didn't use our own ORR sitting right out here that would have been there in fifteen minutes instead of having them call the lifeflight. Okay, well, we're gonna be an hour and forty-five. And you know, lifeflight would have called and passed that information on to the ER and them saying, okay, this is a GSW and switch providers. You guys do that with ambulances? You do that with anything else? So I, I don't get that because I'm not asking any patient information. That's, that's, that's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking why it's like that, why you guys used to choose outside providers when we have it right here? We could have them there in twenty minutes instead of forty-five or an hour and forty-five.
So what, what I could say is that we're, uh, I'm collecting all information relevant to the question and then reviewing that information and then going from there. And, and I take it very seriously, um, and will gather all of that information.
Okay, cuz that, that, that was just one of my concerns. And, I mean, since, since you've got, you've taken over the ambulance service, you, you kinda had to double the, uh, budget. And, uh, I was just wondering why you guys got to double the budget instead of helping us out and doubling it when we had it.
I can't speak to quote-unquote doubling the budget of the ambulance. I can tell you that, um, while we had to work quickly to, um, replace equipment, to develop a contract for ambulance that we had to utilize, uh, COVID funds, um, that, you know, unexpectedly, you know, we had designated, we had hoped to use for other things that were COVID, also COVID-related, while the ambulance is also COVID-related, um, that we used all of those COVID funds for. I mean, we, we ended up using some COVID funds for ambulance, but I mean, I can't speak specifically to quote-unquote doubling the budget.
All right, well, quote-unquote doubling the budget part, I mean, couldn't you have done that and helped us out when we had it and doing that? Instead of not, so.
I believe those discussions and negotiations that you have with the area, um, are ongoing or, but those discussions, uh, don't include us at the service unit. That's my understanding. But regarding your question about the air transport, I mean, definitely, we take it very seriously. And I'm, I'm gathering all the information and we're gonna bring it to risk management and review it. Um, and there's no, um, so, so I am following up on it.
Yeah, is, is someone gonna have to seriously, I mean, at the max die before anything's done? Cuz that's usually what it takes. I'm sorry to say that and, and put it like that. But, I mean, it was, it was the same way with when we first brought tasers onto the reservation. It was the same way with anything else. And there had to be something extreme happen before anything was ever taken serious. So I, I don't know if you just got a deal worked out with the Rapid City people or what, what's going on with that?
I, I, I will stop you right there because, um, you know, I, I don't think, you know, you saying that, um, we have to deal with Rapid City is, um, offensive to me. And I, that, I don't have any conflicts of interest. I think that, um, there's concerns about conflicts of interest and, and I take, you know, I'm very careful about making sure that I'm not biased about those decisions. Um, when it comes to the healthcare of our people, that's, that's something that I take very seriously and that's why I'm here. Um, and so, I, I know that's why we're all here, having this discussion. So I just wanna be clear that, um, that there's nothing else going on regarding that. And that, uh, I will be, I'm collecting all the information. I take that very seriously. And we're gonna review it with our risk management process. I mean, I get the same questions regarding, you know, if someone's telling us, why aren't you using ORR all the time? Then that appears also potentially to be a conflict of interest. So I get that both ways. The decisions that we make about air transport are based on the medical needs of the patient. The size of the patient, how quickly they need to go. Do they need a blood transfusion? Are they in labor? Though, the medical needs of the patient. That's how we need to make our decisions about air transport. So with that in mind, that is how we will review each air transport case and bring that through risk management. It's not gonna be based on anything else.
Okay, um, thank you, Councilman Rodriguez and, uh, Councilman Steele and then Councilman.
Thank you, um, Chairman. You know, I'm gonna thank Councilman Rodriguez for your questions. I thought those were spot on. You know, and that's the same rhetoric that we, we get from, from IHS. You know, I, I, I was a, a supporter, you know, of, of the selection appointment, um, you know, of, uh, the CEO. Um, because, because of your status as a tribal member and thinking that, you know, our tribal members would come first. And no matter what, no matter what excuse you throw out, the fact of the matter is that our tribal members are being neglected when that air rescue is requested. Because time is of, time is of an essence and you're, you're utilizing outside agencies when you could have got these, these patients to quicker care. Now, I don't know the status of that patient, but I, from what I'm understanding is it's not good. And I feel bad because ORR could have responded a lot quicker, would even went to the site. But we sat there and waited over an hour and you, as a tribal member and the CEO, have the ability and the authority to make those decisions to say, utilize that bird that is sitting there and that is quicker. I was in a meeting with you guys the other day when it was stated that ORR has the same abilities as the other air ambulances, the same capabilities to, to take care of our patients. There's no difference. The only thing is, is we don't have a fixed, fixed wing and can't transport long distance. But these ones that are just to Rapid City or, or, you know, uh, Scotts Bluff that are, are, are closer, you could utilize them to save lives. And, and that's not happening. And so, you know, whatever the outcome, you know, I, I, I'm, IHS failed. You failed our, our patient, our people and, and you're gonna continue to fail them. And it, to me, it's, it's like, it's, it's, we're trying to please outside, these outside agencies. We're not even worried about our patients and our people, which should come first. And for me, as a person who, who, who brought this forward, that was my only thing, was to make sure that our, our patients got to quicker care. Now, if that's not happening, I'm failing as a leader of this tribe. All of us are. And to me, it's like, it's not even a concern of us. We're allowing this to happen. How can we as tribal members allow this to continue to happen, knowing that we do have a bird sitting here that's capable of taking our tribal members off? But yet, yet we still utilize those outside agencies and we showed you the statistics and the data. Even Mr. Dan, um, forgot his last name from the area. He got the statistics that, that, that ORR provided, that showing that we're, they're, they're totally being under called. And for me, that's every time we're not calling them, we're failing our people. And I don't, I don't care for a response back because it's gonna be the same thing. You're gonna look at your data and your statistics and go from there. Which for me ain't right. You shouldn't even have to look at that to know we're failing our people. Thank you, Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Spotted Bear?
Thank you, President. So this is not in support of either side, Dr. Jumping Eagle? If you can give a plain, a plain answer to my question, what is it going to take for IHS to consider ORR? Uh, when responding to a medical emergency? We know they're local. We know they're, they're six miles from the hospital. So to call on them, we would be able to respond quicker. What is, what is it gonna take to utilize ORR when it, when responding to a medical emergency?
So, so just to be clear, the, um, as I stated, the decisions about air transport are based on the medical needs of the patient. That, that's, that's the message that we're sending to our teams about whether that's from the ambulance or whether that's from the ED or whether that's from the clinics. If, if our staff are involved, it's based on the medical needs of the patients. And so that involves, that involves time, that involves, you know, the size of the patient, are they in labor? All of those things that I just mentioned. So that also includes ORR. So there, there's no attempt to exclude ORR. There's no, there's nothing like that. So, but if there is some sort of, you know, miscommunication, that is what the root cause analysis helps with, is to figure out, okay, what, why? You know, that's part of the risk management process is to look at that. So I, I don't have the privilege to go off what somebody said or what somebody posted on Facebook. I have to get everybody's information and review it on a factual basis. And so sometimes that can't happen in, in a very quickly, like within two hours' time. And, and this isn't about me. It's not, it's not about whether, you know, you like me or you approve of me or whatever. That's, it's not about me. So I, I, but what it is about me is that I take responsibility to say that, yes, I take this seriously and that I'm gonna follow up on it. And I'm not just giving you words that it is a serious thing and, and that we are taking it seriously. But I can't give you all of the information about a specific patient case scenario. And that's where I'm limited. Can't tell you all of those things, but I can say that, um, there is no conflict of interest occurring on my part. And that it's based on the medical needs of the patient. And if that means they need to go quickly, then that's our, our primary concern. And if that's not happening, then that's what we're gonna be following up on, or I'm following up on.
Thank you. I have to ask that because it's not the concern of either side or who they choose. But it's in response to how we respond to medical emergencies for our oyate. And as you know, we are already underfunded, we are understaffed, we are under a lot of things. And if we can start practicing preventative measures, I would think that would be somewhere to start. So, the risk management, I understand. And then I think I'm pretty positive that you'll see that there's gonna be some questions that will be required, uh, that will require an answer. So, thank you.
Yeah, yes, and then if we wanna have a closed session at some point and talk about, you know, some of the issues that come out of that, but that are not specific to one patient situation, but are more general, then, then we could have that discussion. But, um, but also in general, is that, you know, as the ambulance and, and the ED, as we've taken over, um, you know, some of these processes, we've had to work out, you know, um, nine-one-one dispatch. You know, that's a relatively different process for police and for ambulance. In, in going through that change in that process, I mean, that's part of why I mentioned one of the challenges with the radio agreement, for example. That, that's a transition that we're going through with our emergency management system as a community. That's a transition that's still occurring. Um, and so, that, that's, um, it's not an easy answer. Um, and I don't see it as sides. I see that we're all here, working together for the, for the community and the health of the people. It, it's not sides. And, and so, I, I don't tell you personally, I know that th- this is my job to make sure I follow up on these things. Um, but it's not about me personally.
Thank you, and I look forward to, uh, uh, sitting with you, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Little Thunder.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh. I know we all, we all work together, you know. My question is, uh, uh, Wambley Eagle List, you know, we, we have a clinic here, Wambley Health Center. And also Kyle the Health Center. Uh, I wonder if we could do a brief report? Thank you.
And, and I know you don't have your email in front of you, but I did, um, in the report, it does outline some of the positions we've been working on, um, but I could, maybe to my next report, I'll add some of those. And I have to, um, also say with our Deputy CEO, Dawn Kendrick, she's, uh, the Deputy CEO that's over the Kyle and Wambley Health Centers, um, and we've been working together, we have another position that's gonna be coming out, that's a, um, midwife position for the Wambley Health Center. There's also another Wambley Nurse Practitioner position that's gonna be advertised. There's a La Creek Nurse Practitioner position that will be advertised, but those are all in the process, we have a pretty long, um, HR list that we're working on to get positions advertised. Um, we also have the Kyle and Wambley, um, optometrist and dental positions that are being advertised. And right now, I know that, um, they're looking at dental applicants. Um, it seems like the optometrists are a little bit more difficult to recruit. Um, but we're still working hard to recruit optometrists as well, because we have the optometrist vacancy at Kyle and then the one at Pine Ridge as well, but, um, wanna give a shout out to Dr. Quam, he's our optometrist at Wambley and he's been, uh, rotating through Pine Ridge and Kyle to help out, so that's been a big help as well. Uh, those are some of the, the big developments, I would say the, also did a great job, uh, during the survey with our lab, um, and we have, uh, staff that are there, that are a big help with our contracts as well, so let me give a shout out to them.
Uh, thank you, uh, Doctor, any more questions, uh, or go ahead, Councilman?
Request a hard copy, so, uh, distributed to district peoples, so you could be aware of it, what's going on, so. At my request. Thank you.
Okay. And we also have several behavioral health positions at Kyle and Wambley and Pine Ridge that are in the, um, in the works to get advertised as well. There's some that are already advertised, but several more that will be advertised shortly.
Thank you, uh, Councilman, uh, Yola Boy, then Councilman Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, good evening, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
Good evening.
So, I, I, I'm, I was asked that question. And, um, I, I guess it's, uh, one of the patients that might've been, um, trying to get seen, what it says, uh, IHS would not take care, why is IHS not taking care of the people? I had to take myself to Rapid City to get seen because they're, because they were not being consistent with seeing people and their care. I believe they're passing the buck. So, I mean, that was, uh, that's one of the, the questions I was, you know, asked to ask, since, you know, you're giving your report. Um, so, I don't know if you can elaborate a little bit on that, maybe the process or if there was, uh, uh, backup in the clinic or, or something like that?
I, I, um, that is so general that I, I don't know, um, what to say about that, um. I, you know, in general, our process, we have two processes, if people want to be seen, they can call and make an appointment, um. And then the other part of that is if they want to come in as a walk-in or standby. Um, and I know sometimes that can be frustrating, which is basically people walk in. Um, if there is a no-show, then they'll be worked into the schedule. Um, and I've seen that, um, work, uh, but it's, you know, basically depending on if another patient doesn't show up to their appointment. Which, uh, honestly, probably our no-show rates, depending on the clinic or general clinic, could be up to, you know, fifty percent depending on, on the clinic. So, the other thing, um, is that sometimes people could let, let certain clinics know, like especially if it's a specialty clinic, um, like physical therapy or cardiology or maybe OB-GYN or one of these other clinics, that if they live closer by, they could be put on a call, um, where if somebody no-shows, they could get a phone call that, where they could come in and be seen, but that only works if they live closer to one of the clinics where that specialty is available, so I know that's not available for everybody. Um, the other thing which, um, depends on the situation, but if somebody, for example, just needs like maybe refills and they had been seen maybe several months ago, um, or they don't need labs, for example, they could be seen with telehealth services. Um, but again, that depends on, you know, do they, what type of phone they have or do they have computer access, so there's a little bit of limitations with that, but, um, we do try to get people access, we don't want them to run out of their medications, but then try to get them back into clinic to be seen if they need to get like their labs done or get their blood pressure checked or something like that. The, um, the other part, and we'll be talking about this, uh, some more on the radio show, is that, you know, sometimes people will go to a specialist and the specialist will recommend another procedure and , uh, purchase referred care staff have explained to people that generally, uh, the PRC approvals are for the one visit and if they need a follow-up procedure or evaluation, then generally, they need to either get seen by their healthcare provider or have their provider put another referral in for the, for the next specialty evaluation. Um, or sometimes there's things that we can do here at the service unit, so if there's a procedure that, you know, our surgeons um, like for example, um, you know, IND of an access or something simple, there's things that we can do here. Um, that if, if they get referred out by that, then, um, then contract health is not gonna be, be able to pay for that. So, but I know that, that can be frustrating to people.
Thank you, and then, um, I don't know if, uh, I, and I was there the other day. And, um, if you were gonna kinda give a little u- update on your COVID, you, you relaxed your, uh, your, uh, turns a little bit there?
Yeah, we did send out PSEs and we put it on our Facebook page, but with the rates being relatively low, um, we do have signs at the doors that, um, basically say that if somebody has symptoms, uh, not to come in. Um, and, and that's our expectation of anybody that, um, if they're having uh, COVID symptoms and it has information on what to do on, on the door or to check in, um, right there. But, um, because obviously if they have symptoms and they, they need to be seen, then they just need to, to let us know, um, so we can get them seen. We get them put in a room right away, so they're not in the waiting room. Um, but we do a similar process with our, our staff where they basically have to self-screen um, at the administrative door. So, we have changed that process, but we are also, um, monitoring things so that if the numbers do, we know that across the nation that there have been different variants, um, and there's, there have been a few outbreaks of that, so we're watching things closely and if we see things change, that we're gonna switch back again um, to checking everybody at the door again or changing our visitor policy again, because we have also loosened the visitor policy, um, so it's not so restrictive as well.
And then, uh,
There's PSEs that went out about that too, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Uh, the, one of the other questions that I was asked is, um, if a person isn't, is to get a referral and it takes them, they haven't gotten a referral in over a year, uh, what's the process of trying to get that referral done?
So, then they would come into the clinic and see one of the regular providers. Usually, it's a good idea if somebody kind of picks somebody that they want to be their primary care provider. Um, but if they're not sure, they would just come into clinic and just see one of the providers. Um, but we are in the process of making signs, um, and updating brochures that would have pictures on them. Because I know a lot of times people won't remember, uh, people's names, but they might remember, you know, remember what they look like, so that might help people pick their primary care provider. But it doesn't have to be their primary care provider, that puts the referral in for them, it could be any of the providers. And if it's for something like cancer care or dialysis, they only need one referral a year and then that referral's good for the whole year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Hawkins?
Oh, yes, Dr. Jumping Eagle, oh, thank you, Chair. Um, I had a, I have a constituent that, uh, I assisted her, she's elderly. And I took her, uh, appointment slip papers up to Pine Ridge and I gave it to appropriate people, I hope. And, uh, anyway, she had a, it was concerning, uh, neural, or oh, what was that word? Anyway, she had to get to, uh, Rochester Mayo Clinic. So, there was, there was no, uh, there was no drivers. I guess the driver that was scheduled quit, so there was no driver, so she had to uh, find someone to take her up, I don't know if she made it up to Rochester, but she was assisted with monetarily, she was assisted and hopefully she got over there. But, uh, do they check on them to see if they need a ride home or if they're doing okay or, or, or what? I get.
So, um, I think that our social services program helps coordinate with the OST ban program. But I don't know the de- details per the OST ban program of, um, how they coordinate that after routes. So, we'd have to check with them and I don't know if they have a new director.
Um, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman.
And I'll, I'll follow up on that with social services and, and find out more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, uh, good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
I guess my question today is concerning, uh, behavioral health. And I think just looking at your report, it kinda looked like you had some vacancies in your behavioral health, I don't know, maybe you're short-staffed, but uh, I was gonna ask, uh, you know, we have, uh, inmates sitting in jail, some are, uh, um, put on IC holes and are waiting for, uh, assessments to be done, uh, working with, uh, IHS. And, um, I don't know if it's through your behavioral health, I'm assuming it is. But I guess the question I had was, um, uh, why does it take so long for IHS's behavioral health to go into the, uh, jails, the corrections, uh, to do these assessments? Because there's people, I guess tribal members that are waiting for that so that they can get the help that they need, uh, for their, uh, for their loved ones, so, uh, I just, I I just had that question for you, is there a process maybe that, uh, IHS has working with our corrections?
We, we do have a process, um, but I know, but we, I believe we had to recently change it because we did detail one of our employees over to Kyle, um, while we are experiencing this short staffing and we had worked out a telehealth process with corrections to be able to, you know, provide more services where they weren't having to, I mean, because one of the issues with corrections is, you know, they're short-staffed as well, um, so, we're, um, we've been providing telehealth services um, to corrections, um, and, and the other way that we provide services is through the mobile health unit also. Um, but I'll follow up on it, because I, I, I know before it was weekly that they were doing it, but I think it was like half a day or one day a week with corrections. Um, but it might have been, it might have decreased most recently while we detailed the person over to Kyle. Um, but I, I will follow up on that also.
Okay, yeah, if you could do that, I think that would surely help a lot of the families that have, uh, you know, their, uh, loved ones in there, relatives in there, uh, under IC holes to try to get them assessed.
Uh, there's a One, do you know if those are, um, for psychiatric assessments or for, um, just general behavioral health? Because if they're for a psychiatrist, then those are more difficult because it's, uh, those psychiatrists have a longer wait line and so, we will be having a telehealth psychiatrist starting on May eighth. And so, that's gonna be a big plus for us, um, that's kinda like getting a unicorn or, you know, um, it's, uh, so that might help also, but I don't know exactly what time of, type of assessments they need when they're on the IC hold.
Yeah, I think, uh, what I'm understanding is, I think it's these, what is it, the psychiatrist? The, someone to come in, I, I don't know, to assess them. Because, um, I do, I do know of one, uh, situation where, uh, the family had to put their, um, their, uh, relative into IC hold because of, uh, what he was going through. And, uh, I think it did need somebody to come in on, uh, IHS's side and do an assessment on him. And because it didn't happen right away, um, and I think he was just sitting in there and they weren't doing anything with him. So, he was, um, family decided to, uh, just get him released and, uh, they're taking care of him at home and I really believe that we need to try to, um, uh, take this very serious when it comes to behavioral health. And I think, uh, through this pandemic and everything that's happened in this last two years has really affected a lot of our tribal members and a lot of them are, you know, turning to, um, uh, to drugs. Uh, and, and it's really not a good thing right now, Dr. Jumping Uh, and, and it's really not a good thing right now, Dr. Jumping Eagle. And I, I'm sure you hear a lot about those kinds of things, but we really need to try to, um, address the behavioral health issue, the mental health, uh, part of it. So, if you could follow up with that, I think that, um, you would truly make a lot of families, uh, you know, um, you know, at least feel that, uh, something is gonna get done. And so, if it should happen in the future, they know something will happen with the assessment at the corrections. And a lot of it is on that. Uh, I, I understand the assessments for drug abuse, alcohol abuse. That, uh, the, the, um, Abyta Luta and all of those will go in and do that part of it. But the part we're talking about has to come from IHS with the psychiat, the psycho, you know, psych, was it psychiat, psychiatrist? So, maybe those, if you could, um, you know, look into and maybe give us a follow-up.
Okay. Uh, this, pre- previous to this psychiatrist coming in, then we've had, only had limited, um, like half a day a week of, uh, a, a telepsychiatrist, so it's been very limited um, with a contract. So, um, so we're, we're wanting to, the plan is, or my plan is to gradually increase uh, the psychiatric positions to offer more services here. Um, so, but yeah, I will, uh, check on that and then um, that will be one of our plans. If that's needed with this new telepsychiatrist. Um, we'll get that scheduled with corrections.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more questions for Dr. Jumping Eagle? Is there a motion to approve her report?
A motion to approve?
Motion to approve, is there a second, second by Councilman Hawkins? Secretary, you wanna call the roll, please? Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior? Gerald Canaya, Junior?
No.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
No.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
No.
Garfield Still? Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Oh.
Uh, Council, that motion passes, seven yes, five no, and two not voting. Thank you, Council, uh, Councilman?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Oyate Health Center's, uh, report. I think we did read it.
Okay, motion to approve. Wait, see report, second by Councilman Hawkins, uh, Councilman?
Can we add it twenty-four and twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, could we add, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five?
Okay, so a motion to approve report number twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm sorry, 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 uh, twenty-two, twenty-four and twenty-five. And it was second by Councilman Youngman, or Councilman Hawkins, sorry.
Could we include the twenty-six?
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, because she did turn in her report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Number twenty-six, okay. Yep.
Chair.
Uh, Councilman?
Um, or Secretary, can you read those headings for those reports so that we would have it for the record?
Yes. The motion is, um, motion made by Sonia Littlehawk Weston, seconded by Wesley Hawkins, Senior to approve the reports for the Oyate Health Center, the Ogallalasoo Nursing Home, the Ogallalasoo Human Resource Department, and the Ogallalasoo Tribe Chief of Staff.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so there's a motion, any discussion? Hearing none, Secretary?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, go ahead, Councilman.
You know, I think they should have been ran separately because there's some that I want to approve and some I can't approve. So they should have been ran separately, so we can vote on them separately.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilman. Uh, further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, Secretary, will you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canaya, Junior?
No.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
No.
Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Council, that passes eleven yes, three no, and we're not voting. Thank you, Council.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, Councilman's motion to adjourn, um, there's a, uh, uh, Councilman, before you do that, there's a BIA report. Number twenty-two?
Make a motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second? Second by Councilman Hawkins, to table, it's a non-debatable motion, uh, Secretary, will you call the roll now, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
No.
Gerald Canaya, Junior?
No.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
No.
Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Council, that passes nine yes, five no, and we're not voting. Thank you, Council. Um, I think, uh, Councilman Youngman?
We didn't get a report for number twenty-seven, did we?
I don't believe there's no report.
Motion to table, twenty-seven.
Table twenty-seven, is there a second? Second by Councilman Hawkins. Um, the motion to table is non-debatable, Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canaya, Junior?
No.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
No.
Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, actually um, actually, the, uh, Councilman Youngman's here to give the, I don't remember, the report, the Veterans Committee, so, just kidding. Uh, uh, that's kidding. Uh, so that, that motion passes to table, ten yes, four no, and we're not voting, thank you. Um, so is there a motion? Motion to adjourn, is there a second, second by Councilman Hawkins, uh, the Chief of Staff, you have your hand up? Or Tyler, or, sorry, Council?
Yeah, I do, Tabith.
Okay, so, um, yeah, there's
Yeah, I just, I just got, I just got back on Zoom, but
Your report was approved, so.
Okay, so what about opening the tribal office?
Um, we could go to committee on that, so that'll be fun.
Oh, cause Mason said we have to go through the council, cause it's ordinance that set it down, so we have to go through the council. And I sent you guys a letter for downstairs and upstairs. And Dean said he don't mind, long as it's just two directors upstairs, Mason agreed with me. And then like ten or twenty people downstairs, and then just wait till two people get upstairs, so that's what I'm trying to get past.
Okay, so we'll go to
We need to be with our accountants.
Yeah, no, we'll go to HHS on Tuesday, so, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get it on.
But it's an ordinance.
It, it will most likely have to go through a committee.
It's all the programs, though.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then.
Madam Chief of Staff, that, that's the, the route to go if you're trying to change ordinance.
Okay, okay, cause
And it gets forwarded over to council for their approval.
Okay, so Tyler, um, so if it's all, all five programs under five committees, so it just goes to HHS, it doesn't go to the other four committees?
It goes to, uh, I believe it's Law and Order who has control over the COVID, um, stuff through the tribe. So you'll, uh, law and order to change that ordinance.
Okay, then, cause I sent Stacy both letters for upstairs and downstairs, and then one for downstairs, so, but thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, ultimately, Chair, did we, did we, did we approve your report?
Yeah, that was done.
Okay, just making sure, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks. So there's a motion to adjourn, the second it, um, Secretary, you wanna call the roll?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canaya, Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior? James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yeah.
Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Wesley, did you wanna vote? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council, uh, so we are adjourned at six thirty-six PM. That motion passes, fourteen yes, we're not voting. Uh, thank you, uh, to our secretary staff, thank you to Jedi and Jesse in the president's office for filming this. Um, thank you to Council, thank you for hanging in there, um, and thank you Casino, thank you to LLC, thank you to Kiwi Radio. And everyone be safe, mask up, we're still in a pandemic. Um, also, uh, the vaccination for off-reservation members starts on Monday. So there'll be a link published and, uh, use that link to sign up. And, um, definitely encourage people to sign up online, um, it's, especially for your off-reservation. Um, again, thank you everyone for watching and appreciate everyone in our Oyate, stay safe everyone, prayers and, um, have a good night, hope you will.